I'm glad with your project.
Thank you.
I'd like to call it the continuation of the public hearing from the April 7th meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded for transcription purposes only and the written minutes and attachments, if any, will serve as the official record of this meeting. On behalf of our virtual audience, we ask that the public, joining us in person, to approach the podium in the event that they would like to speak. They will need to announce their name and address prior to speaking. Additionally, we ask the audience to save personal conversations for after the meeting as additional voices cause confusion for those attending virtually. Those attending virtually also have the option to speak. If you wish to speak, just please raise your hand so that the moderator can open up your microphone for you. Gina, if you wouldn't mind doing well, please.
Fisher.
Here.
Crew.
Here.
Marzullo.
Excuse absence.
Manley.
Here.
Spillman.
Here.
In the audience is trustee Augustine, trustee Ashrell, zoning inspector Wilson, and is trustee Sweattick here virtually or no? No, okay, thank you.
So the first order of business is a public hearing for the proposed amendment from an R1 district to a B2 district at 1586 Center Road, which is the former elementary school. I can display a map. If there's anyone that wishes to speak, please go ahead and move to the podium. You're welcome to to speak. Melissa, if the moderator can admit me as a host, I'd appreciate it so I can do screen share.
Mr. Pearl has raised his hand.
Perfect. Mr. Pearl wishes to speak, please let him speak.
Can you hear me?
Can.
Okay. Sorry, I'm unable to attend the meeting tonight, but I had a few comments I wanted to make. The commission has a responsibility to look at the Hinckley 2003 master policy plan and the 2015 comprehensive plan to understand what the residents want for zoning and business development. The Hinckley 2003 master policy plan does not contain a future map, a future land use map. However, on page 57, it reads, "Chapter 6, Implementation Strategies, Zoning Map Amendments." This policy guide includes suggestion for rezoning selected and limited locations from R1 to another zoning classification. The general manner in which rezoning should take place is in response to a property owner's request and only, and I repeat, and only when it has been demonstrated that the expansion of non-residential zoning is warranted from a market demand standpoint. The Hinckley 2015 comprehensive plan, in my opinion, is defective. And my apology to the trustees that approved that plan. The introduction on page 11 of that plan, chapter 8, reads, "This chapter outlines the implementation strategy to aid in the fulfillment of the comprehensive plan's recommendations. The chapter provides guidance on how the plan should be used and when it should be updated and amended. This chapter also summarizes and prioritizes the recommendations made for each component." Unfortunately, the 2015 plan does not have a chapter 8. It's simply not there, so there is no implementation strategy. This document was created by OHM and their name appears on page 2, acknowledgements. I questioned Arthur Smith of OHM by email about this in mid-March, and he agrees, there is no chapter 8. The historic town center already has in excess of B2 lots, some undeveloped or for sale, including many lots still being used for residential. Approving this application would add another blighted business building to our community, and it would instantly become a non-conforming lot with respect to minimum parking setbacks and landscaping and screening requirements for B2 parcels. It could sit like this, undeveloped, in a blighted condition for years if purchased for speculation. The steering committee appointed by our trustees is currently conducting an audit of the 2015 plan, and we have received zero comments from residents wanting to expand the historic town center business area. The commission could approve the application with modifications, such as removing the building and infrastructure before full approval. That would greatly help protect the rural characteristics of Hinckley. As the 2015 plan is defective and does not contain an implementation strategy, the fallback plan should be the 2003 master plan policy that clearly states it must be demonstrated that the expansion of non-residential zoning is warranted from a market demand standpoint. Compare that desire by the residents to the stated reason on the application. The school district will lose the opportunity to obtain as much as possible. The application clearly has not demonstrated a market demand for additional B2 property in Hinckley. The Medina County Planning Commission staff report found no similar market demand. Please protect the rural nature of Hinckley and deny this application. Thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Pearl. As you were able to come, I will disregard your request for us to read very similar comments that you made through email.
That's fine.
So just as now that I have the ability to screen share, let me share the map. So this is the parcel that is colored in purple is the parcel that's currently being discussed. It is adjacent to B2 zone property on the west side. On the north side, across from Center Road is also B2. On the south side, there is a small 100-foot in depth running north to south section of R1, and then a continuation of the B2 district. On the east side is R1 district. The Medina Planning Commission has now reviewed the proposal. They voted last night, nine to two, in favor of the proposal. And I would like to just briefly, if I can, share the, this is the staff comments that were provided as part of the planning commission reviews process. The staff will prepare comments in advance of the commission meeting. The commission will review those comments as well as our comprehensive plan and then make a decision from that. So the Department of Planning Services provided the following comments. "The site is currently zoned R1 residential and includes an elementary school with a parking lot. Central walkways are not available to the site. The master plan policy recommends the subject site for zoning in the B2..."
I'm listening to my meeting that I'm missing right now.
"...the subject site is surrounded on nearly three sides by the B2 Hinckley Town Center zoning district. The subject site fronts on Center Road and is located in an area that is advantageous for business and commercial uses. A 50-foot building setback is required when adjacent to a residential district. Significant screening is also required when B2 uses are adjacent to residential uses." So the planning services recommended approval. The commission voted last night, nine to two, to approve of it. And so it's now in our court to review it and to make a recommendation, which will then be forwarded to the trustees along with the Medina County Planning Commission's recommendation for their ultimate decision as to whether to approve of the zoning change or to reject the zoning change. The full report, I should say, is also publicly available on the Medina County Planning Commission's website. This is just a snippet relative. Marcus, can I? Please.
Good evening, Chris Walney here for the school board, 2813 Waymouth Road. I just, I wanted to wait for those planning commission notes to come up. Good evening. And, you know, I received the report today of the minutes from last night, and I really didn't have much more to add tonight because we've gone through this for a couple of meetings now. But there were some comments made, you know, just statements that I had previously shared. You know, the individuals, in this case, myself and the rest of the board, you know, quote unquote, "don't care what the property turns into, don't seem to have concern." You know, I took offense to that because literally last month, I made a statement, you know, giving some personal history. "This is important to me. I do care what happens." You know, driving this forward, I think it's important that it does benefit the community. You know, there were comments made, "Why didn't I bring up the comprehensive plan in the first meeting?" Well, I actually came more in good faith to have an open conversation about what our desires were to be, you know, what we wanted to go forward with. I brought up the comprehensive plan when it became a little more out of sync, I guess I would say. And then the comments last night further carried this notion forward of, you know, "Why is this happening?" You know, "Personal reasons, they don't seem to care." It just, it just forced me a little bit to lose a little bit of faith in the process of, "Let's look at it without names and faces. Let's look at it as," I think the planning commission did. You know, they looked at it from a standpoint of, "What's the request? What's on the books?" I appreciate Mr. Pearl's comments. The one thing that keeps sticking with me is, "Protect, protect, protect, protect." I grew up in Hinckley. I lived down the street. My parents still live here. I have a lot of family and friends. I love to protect Hinckley, but I'm getting very confused to, what does this protect really mean? Are we gonna just put walls up and let things fall apart? Or do we really have a plan going forward? It keeps reminding me of 2008, you know, "Hope and change, hope and change." Everybody loved it because it meant something different to every person. "Hope and change." Well, maybe it means something to you, maybe it means something to me. That didn't work out too well. This is making me nervous because I don't see a path forward, whether it's this property, this building, some other property, some other building, to internalize everything to a small group demanding these things happen without really the core values of everybody involved. I get a lot of conversation, a lot of feedback from people in the entire county, and the question remains, "What is the protect? What are we trying to save?" So I'm not asking you. I just, these are questions I'm getting and things that, going through a process like this that should be straightforward, yea or nay, has been really convoluted. So I just want to say, yes, we do care about it. It's not only financial, and we appreciate the time in front of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Walney.
Thank you.
Mr. Walney, if I can, I do have one question for you. I think that Tom sent you an email after the last meeting request about...
Oh, yes.
...deed restriction on the school and if there are any current deed restrictions on that property.
No, I spoke to our treasurer, Mr. Barnes. There are no deed restrictions.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
I have a question, though. What is the benefit to Hinckley Township? You said it, there's, you know, the benefit, it's advantageous to Hinckley Township.
Right. I mean, for example, Mr. Pearl said, you know, "A blighted situation, a blighted property." I don't see it that way. I think that we're gonna have to look, look at what's happened over here with the barber shop and things of that nature, hoppy dudes. I don't think, I would, I would design it as, or explain it as a controlled moving into the future. If, if we just shut everything down and don't allow some ideas to come in with control. What do I mean by control? Design things in certain ways. I see that building as the potential for multi-use items, you know. I said in the first meeting, God bless Ray Schulte, we talked endlessly about a senior center or a community rec center or something to that effect. When I'm looking at something as a personal individual in the community, no matter what state I'm in, if there's a property with a building already on it, maybe it's not brand new, but there's so many opportunities from a business standpoint. Hinckley needs, you know, a senior center or a community center or more gym space or office space or God knows what could be designed on there. That's how I see as an improvement. When I hear "protect," they're counterintuitive to each other. That's, that's why I see it as an opportunity, which would be a benefit, would be my two cents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Walney, can you speak to the age of the building? It was stated on the planning commission that the building's 90 years old.
Right, I think 1949 is the most recent number I can think of for the core of the building. I mean, we talked about it last time before that. You know, it was, there was a building on there in the 20s and 30s that was torn down. Mrs. Batke, who used to be the historian for the county, she delivered some drawings and pictures for Buzzard Day that showcased the entire walk-through history. And now they're at the new Hinckley Elementary for showcasing purposes, but it calls out each stage and gate. I know '79, they tore down, tore down a major portion in the front that I didn't go to, but a lot of people did. Walney, I don't know if you remember that big section in the front?
I didn't.
She's not that old. I was gonna say, dude.
I went to the Heights Gliding Center. I was in Almira's though.
But, you know...
I've been there for Buzzard Day though.
True, true, but there was a big section in the front that I have no memory of. But to your point, Mrs. Batke has it all covered. So 49 would be my, would be my statement.
And then the newest portion is the gymnasium.
2003.
2003. Thank you. Go ahead. Do you want to speak?
Jim Byaloski, 2300 Sandy Creek Trail. I'm gonna disagree with Chris, but on the concept of this. In my opinion, let's not try to sugarcoat this. The request for the zoning change is a pure financial play. The Board of Education's initial estimates for the property value were made before construction began on the new school. This value was built into their economic projections and estimates for all three of the projects. So they're not losing any money. They're just not seeing a financial gain with the project. The board also set aside X dollars to cover the demolition and asbestos abatement at the school. What, what we don't know officially, if there's any additional concerns with the land or the water or the wells on that property. People have talked about it, but I haven't seen anything. They also found out if they sold it as commercial versus residential, they were able to get more for the land. So now they're proposing this change to the zoning on it. If you search the comprehensive plan, which was referred to earlier, for the town center, you'll see the words "enhance," "attract," "improve," "protect," "guide the design," "expand pedestrian network," and "maintenance." So how does this zoning change or request for change address those objectives? I understand that last night, the MCP approved the recommendation, but I remind the board that it's just a suggestion of the final decision, which lies with you and the Board of Trustees. Please keep in mind what you feel is best for the township. I appreciate the due diligence that you've done so far and the open discussion that you've had tonight and at the previous meeting. I do have one question for you based upon the information that was presented for last night's meeting. When you showed the zoning map, you covered all four sides of the property today.
Correct.
In the thing last night, it says that it's surrounded three sides, and it's not.
They said mostly, and she actually noted that 100-foot section.
Okay.
The planning commission.
Thank you. So, you know, it comes down to what's best for the township. Because there, you know, it, it won't, if it goes residential or it's tied to the existing property next door, it'll still be able to be developed. It just comes down to, is it done for a financial gain or what's best for the township? So thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify one thing is that we're only making a recommendation. Again, the trustees will vote on the final approval. If two of them vote to approve, it's approved. If two of them vote to disapprove, it's disapproved. We're just making a recommendation, solely lie with them for the final decision. Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public? Any other? Go ahead. And please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is David Terry. I live at 2600 South Canyon Trail in Hinckley. I am a real estate developer. I kinda got new into this today. I was talking to Carl Castle, and he told me about the meeting tonight. From a developer's standpoint, I'll give you my eyesight. I looked at the property twice today. I drove around it and looked at it. When you make a decision if you're gonna go to a business district, it's all depends on what they're gonna have to pay to buy the building. And I could see it as a multiple-use facility. However, it depends on what limitations you put on your use. Office space, it's a, any office space I see, reminds me of a dinosaur. It's, I owned a lot of office buildings. I sold it. I have retail plazas. I had a lot of them. I sold all of them because Amazon wiped out all the little entrepreneurs. So when you're thinking about what you want to do with this building, you're gonna have to think about what you're gonna put into there. And it's gonna be based on what the developer has to pay for the land and, and to improve it to its needs. I think you got a little ways to go, what you're gonna put in there. But putting in something like a senior rec center, I don't think it would generate enough money. There's all kinds of fitness places all over in Brunswick, Strongsville, and they're all starving. So that's, that's my thoughts on the thing.
Thank you.
Would I be interested in it? I'm an opportunist, so... But it would depend on the money that you'd have to pay for it. There's a lot of building there, but to tear it down would be a shame. I don't, I don't see that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terry.
Tom Wilson, zoning inspector, Hinckley Township. I just remind the committee that if this does become B2 downtown, there are some limited uses that are permitted, but there's a lot of uses that are conditional. So this, somebody just can't move in there and, and do something crazy. They're gonna have to be before the Board of Zoning Appeals for a conditional use. And so there are some safeguards in what, what might go in there and what might not go in there. But within our code, we have a procedure when someone wants to bring a downtown business in. And to answer Mr. Pearl's question about whether there's a need, in the last six years, we've had over 200 homes come into Hinckley, and there's still subdivisions planned. So I think there is a need for some additional businesses downtown. That's a personal opinion and not a zoning opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Anyone virtually, trustee Augustine, you see?
Do you want to announce a more time for our conference?
Sure. If anyone virtually would like to speak, please raise your hand so that we can identify you and open up your microphone. No? We had, did you want to speak? Go ahead. There's no one else speaking?
I'm set. I feel bad. You have to hear the same, virtually the same thing that I said last night. I was trying to take out some...
The floor is yours.
Right. And I'm really happy to hear Mr. Walney paid attention to everything I said because I meant every word of it and don't contract a single word of it.
In order to be brief, I just put it here. Jim Larson, 20 Car Road, Hinckley. I'm just gonna read this. It just makes it a lot easier.
If you could, baby, for TV's sake, if you've got it in an email form...
I will, I will...
And we'll just forward it, and that way she'll see it.
I will give it to you, and you can give it to whoever you want. "As the school board spokesman has said on several occasions, the board's purpose in asking for a rezone of their property is only to increase its value. They aren't interested about what that property would be used for after it's sold, what the impact of that development would be on the township or the surrounding area and neighbors. They are interested in maximizing their profit and township's expense. The downtown center, since the comprehensive plan was introduced in 2015, hasn't seen a single new business structure established since the plan was approved, that I know of, not a single one. You know, and the reasons are simple. There's just no demand for it. There's virtually no parking for any businesses that do operate there, inadequate sidewalks and streetlights, and no capital budget exists to remedy these significant defects. Thus, the attractiveness to build or buy and rehab any structures down there is minimal. So what is the necessity of adding more B2 district to an area that already has plenty of area and no activity? The current zoning maintains the predominantly rural character of the township with the potential for complementary uses, which has been the mantra of this township for years, and what has kept and attracted new residents. To surrender yet another piece of the township to potential development that is inconsistent with the surrounding area, nowhere near the center of town, negatively impacts the surrounding neighbors, and is completely unneeded. It's the wrong thing to do. Do it simply to improve the value for an influential owner is really showing them preferential treatment when they don't deserve it or need it. Using the comprehensive plan as the sole justification leaves out so many other considerations that a 12,000-square-foot retail use could potentially happen there if the zoning were changed is a real possibility and something few residents would want to see, period. We didn't move here to shop, and the trade needs of the township residents are minimal. Once again, this comprehensive plan is being used to bring something we don't need to a location that we don't want. We have seen the unintended consequences that happen when a fair idea like senior housing is used to rezone and add new use in an area originally intended for retail and light industrial, a huge apartment complex that residents never imagines destruction of hundreds of mature trees for a development likely only to attract those who don't live in Hinckley. Few residents other than landowners want to see another one. Developers are only interested in profit and care little about maintaining the township which created the value they wish to exploit and an estate that attracted all of us here in the first place. They will look for any weaknesses in that comprehensive plan to take advantage of it and have. I urge you to turn down this application, and when I was talking with the zoning, the planning commission last night, it really is up to us to be able to look at that comprehensive plan, find out where the guidelines in it fit relative to this property, and then make the decision the majority of the residents would prefer that you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There are no other...
Please go ahead.
Hi, my name's Deanna Sworn, 154 West Boston Road. I guess my only question is, if it gets zoned to B2, is, does that mean like any business, you know, they come in? I guess my example would be a Dollar General. The reason I say that is because we travel the country a lot and we go through a lot of small towns. And more and more, every small town we drive through, you see a Dollar General. It's, it's, it's just how it's become. If, let's say they came in and said, "Hey, you know, we'd be interested in this property." Would they, would they have to go against, you know, would they have to go up to the board and actually get that approved for that? Are they able to turn them down if they don't want it? Or would they say, "Hey, yeah, you know, the money's there. Let's do this." I don't know. Do we also want to be another town with a Dollar General?
It's a great question, and on pages 64 and 65 of our zoning regulations, we spell out the types of businesses that are permitted to be within the B2 district and conditions. And I don't know the size of Dollar General. I think Discount Drug Mart, which we do have potentially going in on the West 130th corner, is 24,000, 25,000-foot square foot building. So our code allows up to a 12,000-square-foot retail space within the B2 district. So if the Dollar General fell under 12,000, it could potentially, it would be a permitted use within the B2 district. If it's more than that, it's not even conditionally permitted within the B2 district. The goal of the B2 is smaller retail. If it's more than that, it's not even conditionally permitted within the B2 district. The goal of the B2 is smaller retail.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for your clarification.
If I could, just, you know, Mr. Wallney came in here as a member of the Highland Board of Education and ultimately represents not only them but us as the, as the taxpayers for the Highland local schools. And all I would say is that his, he tried to explain to you as a fiduciary, it's his job to attempt to get the most amount of money possible because he does represent you and me as the taxpayers. We've elected him to keep an eye and we should be thankful for that. But many times we find different sections of government in conflict with each other and that's what we have here. So no matter what happens, whether this vote, the vote tonight and the trustees agree to do this or don't do it, he has done his job. And I really, I can understand. We, I would never agree to changing the property just based on dollars, but I understand exactly where he's coming from and I'm happy that he tried to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
Angela Chesnick. One of my things, that map that you show is just really misleading. I mean, I know it's B2, but the, the property, the, the things that are on those properties now are homes. So if you just look at the way it's zoned, it, it's just misleading because there are homes on those properties. Like in that B2, you know, that is west of the school. Right? Okay. Then the other question I have, and if the school has asbestos in it, is that, is it even a viable option for somebody to use as a public space? Because that was one of the big reasons why we didn't want to use it as a school anymore.
I, I'm not an asbestos expert. I think what happens is if you can encapsulate it, you can keep it or if it can, or you can paint it, have it removed and the building remains. I mean, you've seen many buildings that do asbestos removal.
Okay.
So thank you. And, and I agree with you that the property directly to the west is currently being used as a residence. The one next to that is currently being used to, as a residence. And then next to that is the stained glass building. When we're looking at zoning, we're looking at what, what we would like to see in the future that space be used for. And so that's where we come, that's where the zoning is dictating that this should one day become a business where those homes currently reside. And I think that's going to be an important point.
I forgot one point. And trustees can correct me if I'm wrong. A suggestion was made earlier that one of the potential uses would be a community center. I believe the trustees made a decision on that earlier due to the financial ramifications of it. There was no interest by the township in a community center because of the cost. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Would not support buying the property and navigating the building and keeping up the property.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify on the homes that are in the B2 district, they're there conditionally. And if, if the home is sold, it cannot be used as a, as a home anymore. It becomes a, it's in the business district. So those homes are there conditionally. And it's, it's important to understand that. I understand your point, but it, it's not like being in a residential district.
But isn't it also true that even in the residential areas, there are conditionally permitted uses that are of public use? Home institutions for human care, churches, educational, public buildings, funeral homes, parks and recreation areas, golf courses, cemeteries. So it is not just because we think of it as residential, there are other viable opportunities there, even under residential.
If they're pre-conditioned, those are all conditional.
They're all conditional, but Tom made it, the argument about the business being conditional, different avenues. I just want to make sure it's clear that even under residential, there are conditional uses for other means other than just a residence. So I just wanted to make that.
There are no other public comments?
I have, Marcus, I have one. I know I talked to you before the meeting, that you were emailed a couple. You were going to ask the board if they wanted to read them. I have one that was just emailed to me this afternoon and it was just to me that she asked that I read. This is from Maria Griffiths, who was also on our steering committee. By the way, Monique Casherall. "I am firmly against the rezoning of the old elementary school and center road in Hinckley to a commercial business use. I can see only negative outcomes for this proposal. Hinckley already has a historic town center that is zoned for business and a large area on the western edge of the township. Both of these areas have room for further development and indeed several areas along 130th and 303 have already begun construction. Until these areas are developed and the impact to the community fully understood, I am against adding further business areas. Traffic on Center Road has and will continue to increase with the already planned construction and not only is the flow of traffic affected, but also the wear and tear on the roads and other infrastructure. The township is in the process of a master plan audit and that is just sending out a survey to the community regarding further development in Hinckley. What an irony it would be if the land were rezoned before any survey has a chance to be filled out and returned. It would send a message to the community that the survey is meaningless and their opinion bears no weight on the community actions. Please consider these points when discussing the proposed rezoning." Respectfully, Maria Griffiths." And then you have the other one that you were going to ask. And I just want to state my opinion that it is my understanding that you guys are going to vote on this today and it is my opinion only that it should be held off until you have a full board. You have no alternate and you are missing a member of your board. It was proposed at the last meeting that if you guys feel the need, you can call a second meeting of the month. So that is what I would, I would do. And that's all.
So we received two emails. We received two emails from people that asked that we read them publicly. Both of these emails, one is from Sean Pappera and one is from Cindy Engelmann, have been distributed to the commission members. I just wanted to see if you would like me to read them or if you would be okay with just entering them into the record since you've already received full copies of them.
Could we just acknowledge that the gist of those letters were all opposed to making any change?
Certainly.
And just enter them into the record if anybody wants to see them. Under public records, they're available.
Perfect. I'll provide you copies of these for the public record.
I really think you should read Cindy Engelmann's. They were significant. Much better than anything I said, I can tell you that. They were important, I thought. But, you know, that's only my opinion.
So.
I, I stand by my request, but.
And the purpose of the public hearing is really to provide input to us. And that's where all of us have received them, have read them. I think we're all very familiar with them. Cindy spoke last night. I think they were very similar to what she's provided in the email. So I feel very comfortable that this commission has ample opportunity to read it.
I think she quoted chapter and verse. And made many, many points that were disregarded by the board.
Chris Wallney again. You know, I guess my point would be, and Mr. Larson, not being confrontational. But would it matter if, you know, I honestly said, we do care, you know, and the fact that this wasn't done intentionally prior to a new comprehensive plan? This was just a true need that happened to align with the current comprehensive plan review. It was done under the pretense of a grandfathered law or a situation that already exists. So there was no shiftiness, if that's even a word going on. It was just predominantly, and thank you, Mr. Manley, for your comment earlier, just the responsibility that we have. So a lot to say. I would also say that I'm surprised there's any talk of wanting more residential development in the township in general with the angst and pushback that's been going on. So to leave it residential could create conflict for, you know, situations or promises that have been made to not add more housing, but to do business. But again, just my own personal thoughts. Thank you.
We have someone who has a question for you, Mr. Wallney.
Richard, Richard Pearl, King Road, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to point out that the building appears on Google Maps to be 45, maybe 50,000 square feet. Perhaps Mr. Moly knows the real square foot if he already has estimates for what the building, or what the property with the building's worth is.
I, I don't know the actual square footage. We did have an assessment. I could, again, I could talk to our team and get a square footage. The price at this point is not a secret, but it's not one that I wanted to bring into this conversation, even though I said it's fiduciarily responsible. It was an estimate. So if it went to market, I think it would bear what it would be worth. But I, like I said earlier, or two meetings ago, the residential value is one-third of the business valuation. If that makes sense.
Thank you, Mr. Wallney.
Thank you.
Thank you for answering my question.
Thank you.
We'd like to know what the square footage is. Anytime you sell a house, that's one of the main things. What is the square footage? How many rooms? Thank you.
I think Mr. Tom Schrader had, and then, and again, I would like us to, we've, we've had several people speak multiple times. I'd like to try to get this.
Hi, Tom Schrader, 218 Walden Ridge. I just had two, two comments. Is there the future use map? Do you have a, do you have that available? I'd be interested to see how that compares. This is out of the 2015 comprehensive plan. And just so everyone can take a look at that and we all see it together. And then secondly, what's the sense of urgency to make this happen now, other than that, other than the motion's been brought to the board?
And that's just it. The application's been submitted in a certain amount of time to complete that process with the forward to the trustees and for the trustees to conclude the process.
So without completing it in the required time, what's the penalty for that?
I don't.
I think the court would determine that if we're not going down.
There's a legal process that we have to follow, a legal timeline outlined in the ORC.
Reasonable periods of time.
I, I, I also agree with earlier statements about we should be, you know, thoughtful of the current review of the comprehensive plan and allow the residents to respond to those surveys be, before something of this magnitude is undertaken. Whether you for or against, we should get a broader appeal from the community. So that's all I have. Thanks.
And let me see, I'll just split the screen. There it is. Did you want to speak to the future land, I mean, there is the future land use map. I didn't know if you want to speak to it or?
I, I just wanted everybody to see what the, from the 2015 comprehensive plan, what the thoughts were at that time for that territory, for that area specifically, right? So it doesn't show anything significantly different. Right? There are one that's there.
It's actually, if, when you compare it, it's a pretty big expansion in the northwest.
On the north side. Yeah, I'm talking specifically about this area. Sorry.
The school is almost entirely within that.
Yes, I agree. I agree. But that's my point. I just wanted to see, everyone to see what was planned from then or the proposed usage. Does show it going to, to B2. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson, did you still want to speak?
I'm just going to, go ahead.
Melissa Augustine. I, I really respect the steering committee's comments on this, Ms. Ms. Griffiths and Mr. Schrader's comments with regard to waiting, but this is something that was addressed at the last hearing. We have a process legally that we have to follow and we're bound to, no different than a text amendment. If a change is being proposed, we still have to use the current comprehensive plan and current zoning resolution that is in effect when the application is in front of us. We cannot wait.
And this exact same thing happened last year with TireMax and proposed changes to the definitions of automobile and service station and TireMax went under the old definition because that plan was submitted before the new one was signed off. Mr. Terry, go ahead and I guess you can keep your comments brief and.
I just have a couple of thoughts here too. Has anybody talked to Medina County as far as the sanitary sewer and water to the site? Because to be honest with you, it, I could tell you right now, it'd be cost prohibitive to try to bring the water from the west through that rock. I mean, it virtually, property's worthless from a developer's standpoint.
They have a well in septic and they would have to continue to use the well. Most likely, they would have to continue to use the well.
And I don't know if that, if that septic system was put in at, at the time they were put in, it was grandfathered in, but you change the use in there and that, and the health department's going to get involved in that and the Ohio APA is going to get involved in that and it's going to get really expensive. That, that I would, before, if you're going to turn it over to, to somebody that wants to develop it, that's the first thing they're going to do is see what it's going to cost to try to bring utilities to that site. And I don't think I'd be interested in it. Okay. Thank you.
Change your tune a little bit. Before it was, if you could get the cost low enough. Now it's, thank you. At this time, I would entertain trying.
I was going to ask if you could call for a vote.
Yeah. At, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to close, to close the public hearing. Our vote will actually be later on at the regular meeting.
Okay.
So if, if I could, I'd entertain a motion to conclude the public hearing at 7:19 PM. Moved by Crew.
Second.
Seconded by Spellman. All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? No. Ayes have it. Meeting adjourned at 7:19 PM.
Couple minute.
Do you want to take a couple minute break?
Sort, sort through my papers and get the right papers.
I expect this to be a long one.
You got right guy in the.
Well, we think we are. We're debating because we don't have a full board. You're going to find out, probably tonight. Nothing personal. Remember that.
Few years later come back and now it's, you know, I don't understand. I, I guess it's probably, I don't understand what the audit is. To me, an audit is government's coming in and looking at my books because IRS is angry with me.
I think you can twist this to an audit as you look at it and those things that aren't right, then you delve into them deeper. And all they have to do is look, okay, what's not right? Here's what we said we were going to do and what's not.